I call this meeting the Upps County Commission to Order. We'll have a moment of silent meditation, followed by prayer, followed by a close of leasings, and then approval of our amendments from October 19th, 2017, and October 24th, 2017.
Whereas the fight of the United States of America, and to the great honor of the British States, one nation under God, in the middle of the world, liberty and justice for all.
So you guys would use your minutes for October 19th, 2017, and October 24th? It's been moved to second, all in favor of Secretary of State saying aye. Pose no, and ayes have. We have some scheduled appointments here this morning. At 9:05, we have Aunt Swatter on behalf of Lieutenant of the Line Club, presentation of proclamation for diabetes awareness month. And 9:15, discussion property owned by Thomas Moats located in Warren District, Tax District, Tax Map 6C, Partial Number 41, last extension was approved during August 31st meeting. And 9:30, correspondence from Mary Wood, requesting closure of an unused paper alley located between partial of land that she owns in Buchanan District. This application has been submitted per West Virginia Code 7-1-3H. At 9:45, Burl Smith, Upps County Solid Waste Authority Director, and Terry Carrington, West Virginia Make It Shine Coordinator, provide a review and West Virginia Make It Shine Clean County Award, Award, Award in 2017. Terry, that light's affecting me. Is that 9:05?
About a minute.
Okay. I'll move on. Then to item discussion action approval. Item one, approval and signature resolution of participation through West Virginia Certified Development Community CDC program for Upps County Development Authority. Have a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Been moved to second, all in favor of Secretary of State saying aye. Pose no, and ayes have. Item two, approval and signature of the service contract between Valley Business Systems and the Upps County Commission for the Collar Copper Company located in Commission Office for the annual amount of $584. This includes everything except papers, papers, and computer and networking service. This contract is effective 11/1/2017 to 11, or 10/31/2018. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Been moved to second, all in favor of Secretary of State saying aye. Pose no, and ayes have. Item three, approval and signature of service contract with Cleveland Brothers to perform semi-annual service, annual, and annual maintenance service for the engine, generator, and gen set located at the 9811 Communications Center. The cost of this is $1,268.30, includes all parts, travel time, mileage, and labor for these two inspections. Should that basically be expected every six months? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Been moved to second, all in favor of Secretary of State saying aye. Pose no, and ayes have. Our first appointment is with Aunt Swatter on behalf of Lieutenant of the Line Club. Aunt, you can fill out the closing.
Do you have the important?
Well, we just thank you for coming.
I'm reading this property. That's good. I didn't worry about that. Diabetes Awareness Month, November 2017, whereas diabetes affects 26 million people in the United States and is a serious disease to which is no known cure and which is the seventh leading cause of death by disease in the United States. And whereas another 79 million adults have pre-diabetes, a condition which puts them at greater risk for developing type 2 diabetes. And if current trends continue, 1 in 3 American adults will have diabetes by 2050. And whereas type 1 diabetes is an autoimmune disease in which a person's pancreas stops producing insulin, a hormone that enables people to get energy from food. It occurs when the body immune system attacks and destroys the insulin-producing cells in the pancreas called some beta cells. While the causes are not yet entirely understood, scientists believe that both genetic factions and environmental triggers are involved in onset and has nothing to do with diet or lifestyle. There is no prevention for type 1 diabetes and at present, no cure. And whereas type 1 diabetes strikes both children and adults at any age, it comes on suddenly, causes dependence upon injected and pumped insulin for life, and carries the constant threat of devastating complications. And whereas diabetes is the number one cause of blindness in the United States, diabetes has many faces, affecting everyone, young and old alike, Caucasian, African Americans, Latinos, Native Americans, Asian Americans, and Pacific Islanders. With minority populations in the United States having an increased risk for developing the disease. And whereas an increase in community awareness of risk factors and symptoms related to diabetes can improve the likelihood that people with diabetes will get the attention they need before suffering the devastating complications of the disease. Now whereas we, the Upps County Commission, hereby proclaim November 2017 as Diabetes Awareness Month, and the county of Upps, and the state of West Virginia, and encourage all citizens to help fight this disease and deadly complications including heart and kidney disease, stroke, blindness, and amputation by increasing awareness of the risk factors for diabetes and providing support for those suffering from diabetes, of which I am one.
Thank you for naming that. Swatter.
So move. Second.
Been moved to second, all in favor of Secretary of State saying aye. Pose no, and ayes have.
Oh, we got a picture.
If you'd like to get a picture.
Picture, okay.
Oh, why don't you guys come down and we'll get started. It was so terrible up there.
You want to sign this before we get down there?
Yeah. Time for us to get a picture of it. Come on, guys. I'm gonna do this one more time. There we go.
Oh, if you...
If you have her sitting there, we stand behind her.
Yeah, that's fine. You can all sit.
Sit there and we stand behind her?
Um...
I don't care. You tell her where.
Um...
Well, the picture you took of them on Sock may have turned out well.
With the blinds now, or no, yeah, if everyone's sitting here, yeah, that's fine. Sorry. I'm a little scared.
Why don't you just stand behind them? You're either up in the chair, in back there.
Chair.
Huh?
Yeah.
Look good there.
Okay. One, two, three. That's good, and I just need to make sure I have it.
Okay. Picture, gotta move that. You don't miss anything.
Nicholas Smith. I want to say...
Oh, my face already.
I didn't do it. And yeah, that's how you... Nicholas Smith.
I'd like to make an announcement, too, that this coming Saturday, the Line Club in Tannen is having a pancake, biscuit, and gravy. So if you're ever getting blood at the middle school and you haven't ate yet, gotta go to the Line Club and support it. I know I'll be there along with any event the Line Club has in Upps County. Thank you all.
Thank you.
6:30, closing.
12:30. Okay, yes. And I, right now, I'm here on Saturday, so...
You got a date, Carol? You got a date, you got a date?
I see. He took all his dates.
He stares you up.
He does his time. He goes up and he just...
He stares you up.
I was asking out, but okay.
Well, you took me out, but Chuck's out there with us.
Probably breaking somebody out.
Be there, be there, even cross the line majorly because you're a rascal.
On live TV.
Yeah.
No back and down now.
That picture of the socks turned out well. That's why I was hoping she'd get y'all over here. So I'll take that.
Yeah, we do need a backdrop for you guys. We can just wheel up there and stuff.
I move on with this item for discussion action approval. We have a couple more. Item four, I'll pass it up. For your information, I actually have correspondents. Item one, from Melissa Yertson, Samia, Executive Director of the West Virginia Courthouse Facilities Approval and Authority, announcing that the previously requested time extension for the Circuit Court Program project has been approved. The new deadline for completion is February 28, 2018. Item two, correspondence from Tabitha R. Perry, Assistant Administrator to... I'm gonna skip that, we'll come back to that because it's 9:15 now, and that might take a little while to discuss. 9:15, we discussed property owned by Thomas Moats located in Warren Tax District, Tax Map 6C, Partial Number 41, last extension was approved during the August 31st meeting. Tabitha, you did have an update on this, right?
I received a call from Crystal Cummings on October 23rd advising that Mr. Moats just had surgery and was in UHC, and I did not know of his release date. His son, Robert, was out of town until that weekend, but his son was supposed to begin work on the property. I do not have photos of the property taken this week for each review.
Father, again, I mean, it's got a long ways to go to get cleaned up, but it does look like they have at least moved things or things or get a bill, but...
Yeah, they are. And, you know, if you just went to do surgery or maybe still in hospital, I hate that badger you could fish.
Yeah, I do, too.
Motion to give him a 60-day extension.
I would say that would be fine. I think under the situation, we should do that.
So that's second?
That's a second.
Second, all in favor of Secretary of State saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, ayes have. Mary, who left the wake for 9:30, so I'll move one for some of the other, okay?
Okay.
Item two, correspondence from Tabitha R. Perry, Assistant Administrator to Todd Spencer Walker Gould regarding his property located in Washington Tax District, Tax Map 7J, Partial Number 11, during the regularly scheduled commission meeting conducted on October 26, 2017. Commission move to grant Mr. Gould a 60-day extension to bring the property into full compliance with the orders. Do you have an update on that?
That's just a copy of the letter stating that you'll review the property status again on December 28.
Okay. Item three, correspondence from Tabitha R. Perry, Assistant Administrator to Frank Kelly regarding his property located in Washington Tax District, Tax Map 7J, Partial Number 11, during the regularly scheduled commission meeting conducted in October, on October 26, 2017. Commission move to grant Mr. Kelly a 60-day extension to bring the property into full compliance with the orders. Item four, release of liability executed by Ronald Skidmore Jr. on behalf of the Barbe County Office of Emergency Management and E911 for hydrant data received from the Upps County Address and Mapping Office as of November 2nd, 2017. Is, where are these hydrants actually located in the area? Good question.
It's not only hydrants, it's also center line, that, um, structure, shape, files. Because we're on the border, in case there's a call that they also respond to, they were requesting all of our information for their 911 center, which is normal protocol for an adjacent county to have.
Okay. We need to prove that, no?
No.
We don't?
It's just an FYI.
Okay. Item five, Upps County Revenue Change Index as of 10/26/17, prepared by Terry Jopin, Upps County Address and Mapping Coordinator. Item six, Upps County Mileage Report, September 2017. Seven, Newsletter and for Event Notifications. Eight, Junior's Handover Notice of Meetings. Nine, Meeting Minutes. Ten, Main Meetings. Eleven, Appointments Needed. Four, Upcoming, Tannen Public Service District, July 31st, 2017. Item table items. I don't entertain a motion to take this off the table, please, because Tabitha's already reported information back from the, and Terry Jopin's wanted to train it, and she'll be able to bring us more information back. That's this month, is it?
No, the training that she said to get to us in January.
Oh, in January? Okay. So I don't entertain a motion to take that off.
So move. Second.
Been moved to second, all in favor of Secretary of State saying aye. Pose no, and ayes have. Next regular meeting of the Upps County Commission, November 9th, 2017, and 9:00 a.m. at Upps County Courthouse Sanes. The regularly scheduled commission meeting to be held on Thursday, November 23rd, 2017, has been canceled. We'll pay some bills until we can discuss reasons for the firm. Item 30, we have correspondents from Marion Hermann requesting closure of an unused paper alley located between partials of land that she owns in Buchanan District. The application has been submitted per West Virginia Code 7-1-3H. Mary, I was looking at photograph. Is that, is that the little lane alley between where Kirk Summers, his dad Jim, usually did live? You own both sides of it?
Yes.
Okay. I don't... Terry has brought check with the prosecuting attorney because of mineral rights?
On one of the deeds, it says that there is a reservation for the coal, oil, and gas rights. So I wanted to talk to the prosecuting attorney and just see if there's any additional steps we need to take to notify the owners of the mineral rights when we put out the public notice, because they would have right to come to the hearing and voice their opposition to the closing of the alley. So if I can speak with him this week, I think we could get the public notice on the agenda for next week to give out to the paper.
Okay.
But I just wanted to speak with him about that first, because we've never had it out. We've only done one alley since I've been here, and then prior to that first, one done in 2004 that was closed. But neither one of those had a separate agenda for the mineral rights.
I don't see, it's, it's the old orange road on one side, and the four lane on the other side, and I don't see, and Mary owns everything on both sides, so it's not blocking anybody.
Where's the alley go to?
The attorney and everything.
We're clear.
I mean, if you own, if that alley lived in 22 hours, is it?
What you say?
No.
No, it's the other one from one road to the other.
Like, here's my piece of property, I have a building on the other where I sold my boat, and here's the house, so the other piece of property, and the alley just goes there 22 hours. And here's Upps County 12, and here's 33. I mean, it's, it's right there.
She owns on both sides. I'm on those sides, she doesn't, and I'll notify them.
On this one piece?
But it's just this alley right here.
On this one piece of property?
I don't know, but it's these or this piece, or two pieces.
I'm trying to give an answer to that. I don't think it's gonna affect a thing.
I just don't know if I need to notify them.
Well, let's just check, because we want to do everything right here, you know what I mean? So let's check, we'll get back to you, and I don't see a problem.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? All right, thank you, Mary. You have a good day, Mary.
You, too.
Gentlemen, I have a budget revision that needs to go to the state. It's to allow for the homeland security grant for ENPG, for OBM, for radios. We want to get the budget revision approved before we actually spend money. So, some of the interpaying issue. Would you want to look at it?
Well, no, we have to pay them prior to get them.
Yeah, it was increasing revenue in the federal grant line to equipment alley and OEM.
Does he got approved? I wonder if you're here, Terry. He approved for the radios?
Uh huh, yeah. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. Been moved to second, all in favor of Secretary of State saying aye. Pose no, and ayes have.
Don't forget to sign.
Approval was due, or?
I think it was Buddy Buddy. Do you move to crack a standing second?
We just stopped it.
Uh, yeah, I put a sticky there.
It's 9:45, we have an appointment for Burl Smith, Upps County Solid Waste Authority Director, and Terry Carrington, West Virginia Make It Shine Coordinator, provide a review of the West Virginia Make It Shine Clean County Award 2017.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is good to appear before you folks here today. It seems like normally, we do this in April for the proclamation for April Make It Shine. So we come back with good news today, and before, Terry Carrington with West Virginia DEP's Make It Shine Board, chaired by Board Director, is with us today. But we also have Mary Gower, who is one of the Solid Waste Authority Board Member, and Jay Hollis are board members. And just as a matter of interest, Jay is the county appointee to the Upps County Solid Waste Authority along with Joyce Harris Thacker. We have two other board members, one other board member, I guess, D. Paul Richter, and it's a five-member board. And I'm the director of the Solid Waste Authority, and I've been in that role since 2012. So it's good to be here. What we want to note is from the period of, the days, right, August 1st of, or August, or August, July 31st of 2016 to August 1st of 2017, was the year that we applied for the award, and we did a number of things, and Terry will give you more information on that. So we did, we did well as we made this application, and just as a matter of interest, I'll just hold this little plaque up here, which says, REEP, West Virginia Make It Shine Clean County Award, first place, Upps County, 2017. So Terry will give you some more information on that.
Good morning, Commissioner. I am honored to be here. Usually, Burl is nice enough to call me the statewide program manager for Make It Shine, which sounds, you know, very important, but it has a staff of me. And whoever I can rope in to help me stuff envelopes every once in a while. But normally, I'm behind my desk, and it really is nice to get out and recognize the people that are in crutches, trying to improve their communities and their communities. Last, I've only been Make It Shine Coordinator, this is my third year. Last year, I didn't, I had a very lackluster turnout for applications. So after excoriating everyone at last year's Solid Waste Authority meeting, this year I had more applications than I knew what to deal with. So it was very competitive, I just wanted to know that, so you can appreciate the value of Upps County's efforts. The Clean County Award is designed to promote environmental stewardship, but particularly volunteerism. We feel, I feel, that people that volunteer in their communities have a certain sense of ownership in their surroundings, and as such, take pride and treat it better. And Upps County certainly excelled at that. I've just been gonna give you a couple numbers, I know you're very busy. One of the things that we judge applications on is their participation in REEP programs. I don't know if you're familiar with REEP, but it was started by A.J. Manchin, the Rehabilitation Environmental Action Plan. And under that, we have a number of programs. I'm sure you've heard of Adopt a Highway, Adopt a Spot, Operation Wildflower, the Pollution Prevention and Open Dumps Program, where we work with, with counties and municipalities to clear illegal dumps. And also the Youth Environmental Program, and Upps County far and above was one of the most active participants in REEP programs. They have 25 groups with 280 citizens participating in various cleanups, 71 miles of highway totaling over 11,000 pounds of trash. And one other thing I wanted to note that stood out, there's nothing like it anywhere in the state. Union Elementary School has an aquaponic system, I'm not sure if you were aware of that. They actually teach children about ecology by racing trolley in the classroom. And other schools are involved with it, too, but there's nothing like it in the state, and it just, I had to walk around BP showing, "Look at this, this is really great." And of course, there are, your recycling program is marvelous. There's others in the state, but this one is really good compared to, like you say, Canow County, which doesn't even have a recycling program anymore. So I just wanted to point out that. And also, the Buchanan River Watershed Association, some of their achievements are mentioned here, I just would just say it's a very active association. I'm also on the Grant Review Committee in the Buchanan Watershed Association, always turns in very precise and excellent grant applications, which we're always glad to honor each year. So I just wanted to impress upon the commission how hard the Solid Waste Authority has been working to make Upps County shine.
Thank you. For all, I want to thank you and your board for an excellent job, thank you.
The board has done a great job over the years, and it is important to note that so much that makes a success of the city of Buchanan's cooperation. The Solid Waste Authority has a cooperative agreement with the city of Buchanan, worked with the waste department in particular, to address recycling and waste control issues in Upps County. So it's been a very successful endeavor, and probably the Gulf Point Crossroads Recycling Center next to Walmart is one of the best used... They actually teach children about ecology by racing trout in the classroom. And other schools are involved with it, too, but there's nothing like it in the state. And it just, I had to walk around BP showing, "Look at this, this is really great." And of course, there are, your recycling program is marvelous. There's others in the state, but this one is really good compared to, like I say, Knott County, which doesn't even have a recycling program anymore. So I just wanted to point out that. And also, the Buchanan River Watershed Association, some of their achievements are mentioned here. I just would just say it's a very active association. I'm also on the Grant Review Committee, and the Buchanan Watershed Association always turns in very precise and excellent grant applications, which we're always glad to honor each year. So I just wanted to impress upon the commission how hard the Solid Waste Authority has been working to make Upsher County shine.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carrington. For all, thank you, and your board, excellent job. Thank you.
Hi, and the board has done a great job over the years, and it is important to note that so much that makes it successful, the city of Buchanan's cooperation. The Solid Waste Authority has a cooperative agreement with the city of Buchanan, worked with the waste department in particular, to address recycling and waste control issues in Upsher County. So it's been a very successful endeavor, and probably the drop-off point at Crossroads Recycling Center next to Walmart is one of the best-used and most efficient drop-off points in the state. Everybody goes to Walmart. I have tours of fourth-grade students of Solid Waste Authority, give us the recycling center each year, just try to get them interested in recycling, and I talk to them, "How many people been to Walmart? Never had a hand that didn't whiff." It is a great location. But one of the, particularly on this award, you mentioned that he encouraged people to make applications last year. We did that for an entire year. Jay Holla and I made, worked on both the county application, and he worked on the city application, and we both came in first place for the Clean Community Award. But the biggest thing is, I have a copy of a $2,000 check that we won. So it's nice to get all these, but this, this is really nice.
Money's always good, Burl.
That is always good. And I was thinking also this morning about some of the things, and all that we've accomplished here in Upsher County, and I don't recall ever coming before the county commission and actually asking for money. Okay, we ask for your cooperation and promotion of our activities, and we appreciate that. But you've always been very helpful, all the commission has. So once again, to thank you. I have a copy of your application, I'll leave with you, and I can email a PDF copy, and everybody can clear their calls, so. And so, thank you. If there was a way, we could get a picture of the board and Terry and the commission would invite them.
Okay.